I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all due justice for all.
Morning, everyone?
Morning.
Well, we got kind of a light agenda this morning, so we're making a motion, oh, look for a motion to approve the agenda.
You didn't ask for the amendment?
No, I just added that little short work session afterwards.
I understand, I understand, short.
It's gonna be very short.
Okay, make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries, look for a motion from the minutes, is approved, Dave?
I looked around, I didn't see anything wrong with him, I make a motion to approve, I'll second Dave's motion.
Yeah, well, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, minutes are approved. General public concerns, hopefully there's somebody here who wants to talk to us, because we have some time.
You guys wanna talk to us today?
Somebody wants to talk to us.
Kent wants to tell us-
Play your ears.
Kent wants to tell us that our Zoom didn't work last week, so we are, and Sandy's living proof today.
Yeah.
Cancelled the subscription, or what?
Well, we were using Solutions, right? We actually never had our own contract, we were running off of Solutions up there.
I'll have to check into it.
And see what the problem is.
Well, I think we just still have to have the ability-
It needs to be out there.
Because if Colin couldn't come today, and we-
Well, if there's a landowner that bought a state or something, they can always-
They can always listen.
And you guys have probably seen it too, in your other various board meetings, that they're going back to, you know, more in-person, thankfully. But, they also, they have always telling you, here's the option, I just got a notice last week on one of said meetings. This is, this is the hybrid meeting, and it's, here's where it is, but here's the Zoom.
Well, we have, on one of my board meetings, we have a person that has some health issues, so they're scared to death to come back, so they still want the ability to have-
Exactly.
So, for us, we're gonna have to make sure it works, so. We apologize, Kent.
Oh, it was fine, I was busy at work anyway, and I thought, okay, they're gonna approve the budget amendment and approve the Bible reading.
That's pretty much what happened.
Yeah, that's about the long and short of it.
All right, maybe we should do our committee of reports, and get them out of the way.
Should we go real slow, and-
Talk slow.
Uh, okay, the only thing I did was Wednesday night, uh, come up here for the flag removal, or taking down of the flags. And I would like to put a shout-out to the group of kids that came for, for, uh, you know, the silver cord, the football kids, the-
Yeah.
I counted thirty-two kids that I-
Wow, what else?
So, and it was warm, and it was, um, you just gotta keep your head on the swivel, because pipes are swinging everywhere. And you, you, uh, don't wanna get clocked out in the middle of the grass, but there was a great group of kids, and thank Coach for wrapping up the- Keeping them all in one area to, to get it done, so what did we do, about twenty-five minutes?
About twenty, twenty-five minutes.
Wow.
We had them all down, hold it, I walked around trying to put the caps back on, and they passed me, and there it was, where I got halfway around.
So, it was, it was a great, great group of kids, and we reminded them that July fourth will be-
That's terrific.
-every year again, and hopefully we'll get them back, so.
Yeah.
July first.
That, that's all I had.
Okay, the only thing I had was on Wednesday, second, I had a Zoom meeting with ISAC, um, for the education committee that I'm with. And we just began to discuss, um, the annual community contact in August, and trying to encourage people to come to that, that you could, um, network with other, uh, county supervisors to know what, um, is going on within the different counties, and how we might be able to follow some of our positions they've made all the time, and then also that, uh, the certified county supervisor, um, meeting, our certification, uh, we're naming that down. It's to do the tenderness, the use, also, but to attend three, um, ISAC meetings, uh, that year, in a year, not two years. So, it'd be six meetings that we want you to attend, it's been two years to get the certified, um, county certified supervisor. So, the business of people, that's all I had.
Sandy, what, when is your, the ISAC convention this year?
Pardon?
What, what is the date in August of that?
Oh, it is August twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and then twenty-seventh of August.
Okay.
And I have to go down to twenty-fourth, because we're having the education, uh, committee meeting in person, that I think they're meeting also with the, um, exec board that day.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I had.
I didn't have anything official, took the flags down, we really wanna say thank you to the Coach, brings all the kids up here, and the silver cord kids, that was tremendous, we needed them. And we sure enjoyed having all of them up here, and helping hold the flags and everything, so, that's all I had.
I didn't have anything official, um, yeah, thanks for having that, Dave, as you have been for years, and I'm glad you got a lot of help to do it, that's awesome.
Yeah, it really makes the courthouse look beautiful.
It does, it is, people have commented, and even come and take pictures, and so it's, it's kind of a, you know, a destination thing for people coming to look at it.
It's kind of an honor to our veterans, when they see all the play stuff, and-
It is, it is, and, so, no, no, nothing, no official extra meetings last week, for me.
Okay, I had nothing official, I, Iowa Drainage District, I go and do payroll every two weeks on that, I've done that this week, and that was about it. So, anything else you wanna discuss for a while?
Well, I, recently, this was still on DD eighteen, which bear in mind is a huge drainage district.
Yeah.
They're working towards, uh, completion of the last, the two branches of the actual cleaning, and, uh, talking to Travis Peterson on that, he said it's like a lot of the other areas in that district, there's a lot more stuff in there. And I just talked to a gentleman, whose grandfather would have remembered, it would have been late fifties, since that was cleaned, which probably explains why there's so much stuff in the ditch.
Yeah, it's a long time.
He does it in May, um, but Travis says it's going well, it's just slow, so they're doing that. He said the update on DD six, uh, Rick Peterson, same outfit, is working on the DD six cleanout, making good progress. Um, I don't know if it's a halfway point, give or take, from where he started, whether to end, then, a little ways down the road, when they get to Roosevelt Avenue on-
They're gonna clean that site?
Yep, they aren't there yet, that will be a ways till they get to that, but once they, but they're obviously, they're going from bottom to top. But that's going well, the projects are going good, um, looked at a, uh, just on DD eighteen, and it's not a, much of a big deal, but it happens to be while they're there, there's a couple of surface drains that, that, it's technically the beginning of this spur ditch, but it's where Travis is working to get his cleanout completed. There's a couple of surface drains that we looked at that need some attention, nothing really major, they're not really too screwed up, but they need a little, from over the years, a little ground shaping. Um, had conversation, the one being smaller, might make more sense to turn it into an intake versus a surface, open surface drain, to keep some of the, hopefully, stuff from, like Travis said, he, he always, they kinda don't always like to see surface drains, because they think that's where a lot of the sediment comes from.
Yeah.
So, but, so looked at that, they said both those projects are going well, it's just, you know, it takes time, especially with the cleaning over, well, over sixty-five years, so.
Yeah.
So.
And you know, and I think the farming practices have changed a lot in the last twenty years, and our silt problems are way less than they used to be fifty years ago.
Yeah.
When you plow, everything black is black, and, yeah.
And I mean, even today, and Rick's right, we have better conservation practices, but they said, don't always blame it on, you know, stuff washing in, but it's amazing, still, sometimes just the amount that can blow.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, there, there is still wind erosion, and things like that, that, um, and, so, I don't know, I mean, I know we've talked about this in drainage, that, it's crustaceans, we can certainly look at keeping these ditches clean a little bit more than every sixty, seventy years. We have the ability to do that, and, we're sure getting a lot of neighbors here that needed it for some time.
Yeah, and, uh, you all probably been aware of all, the beavers and the mush grass realize it's a dry year too, and they're just building dams like crazy.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's crazy, how many small dams are out there now, and you hate to rip out their home, but it's gotta go.
They gotta move down to a different county?
Yeah, move over the range.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're a little short of their water sources.
Yeah, and they obviously realize that there's, because they're, they're building some pretty hefty dams in a short time.
I saw on, uh, yesterday, I think it was, I hope it was Webster County, but they had a, anybody see that chunk of road that heaved up? And just remind people if, I hope we don't have anything like that happen, but if someone sees it, the people are as much our eyes out there to report it, so if somebody doesn't get hurt.
Yeah.
Um, that thing, I could, it looked like a winner, like it heaved up, I'll bet it was up eighteen inches.
Oh, wow.
So, I guess I would remind people if, if you see something like that, let us know, or let-
Call dispatch.
Dispatch, and get them, so we can get somebody out there and take care of, at least get in the traffic, so.
They had one of them down on, that shortcut goes into Hardon Rogers from one sixty-nine.
Oh, okay.
They had one heave up there down by the river a few years ago, and that thing jumped up, the car hit it, it took, car don't go through that, ooh.
Well, that, motorcycles, and-
It tore the whole front end out of that car.
So, I saw that, kind of a-
That's really good reminders for everybody.
Yep, yeah, be aware of that.
We usually don't have this kind of heat, not this early in the year, but man, that corn is making up ground.
Definitely making up for heat units, if we're there, you know.
We just, gonna suck all that moisture out, what little we have in the bank now, it's gonna be short, shorter, so, you'd think it'd build up a sunburn some night.
All these days, I know Ben's not here to give me updates, but means I live close by this one, uh, one project that, as far as resurfacing, they did, just east of Littlemore, which would be across the way from that hill, they did get that resurfaced into the week, last past week, so, very nice, uh, they obviously, Ben told us, they got some drainage installed in that, along the shoulders of the road, to, because that is just a, you know, it's a side hill seat thing.
Yeah.
Um, that's just a nice little project, it really improved that, uh, stretch going up the hill, that was so damaged.
I'm assuming they're still out on the P twenty-nine, because I haven't seen anybody out at-
Out at the drag strip.
Drag strip road yet.
That's where, that's where Ben was this morning, I talked to him.
They're there this morning.
He's at the drag strip.
Okay.
So, I mean, definitely taking advantage of no rain delays, and-
Yeah.
I know they work Saturday, because they were, saw trucks on, so.
So, I mean, that's a benefit, that, uh, so those projects are nearing completion.
Yeah, haven't done early. Well, should we take a little recess?
Do we have any, can we go now, so we did commit the reports, do we have any other items to discuss?
If you have anything for us, Trish, if you need to discuss for upcoming-
I just tell her, have you checked with Solutions, and make sure we can get that-
Check on that Zoom?
Zoom, and, because we're gonna, if we didn't have any contract with them, we're gonna have to have, because I think it's gonna be something we're gonna use for good.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think we're ever gonna lose it, and-
It's probably, like you say, it's just gonna be the new norm.
Yeah.
Um-
Well, it's nice to, if one of us leave, you know, like this, you know, we can, we can zoom in, you know.
Yeah.
So, I-
The church, you just get it figured out, it'd be nice just to put it on the agenda, because lots of meetings I know too, they put the link and everything right on the agenda.
Yeah, they do.
What's that one?
Oh, the, but they link right on the agenda, it's typed in, so they got the number.
Yeah.
I have one Wednesday. Sure.
Yeah.
Secondary roads.
Oh. That's probably Bee's driving to the mine, though.
Well, that's what I said, I told him, I, I said I'd give you my phone number in case I can't, because sometimes over in Roanoke, Iowa, they don't have a whole lot of internet out, so, so I said, if you're, don't have enough people for forum, you can call my number, and I can at least listen, and I'm not-
Listening, yeah.
Well, in regards to that ISAC conference, I know I saw something this past week from ISAC, and they, they could spoke to the hotel reservations, did you see that, Trish?
Mm, yeah.
Uh, that's opening up, of course, you need to be res- registered for the conference before you can get a-
It's a hotel reservation.
But I just wonder if there's any hard and fast dates on that, personally, I'm still mulling over going, I guess. I don't know what you, what anybody else's thought is on the conference itself. Well, right, no, I know that it's when it is, but, I know when it is, when, like Sandy said, twenty-fifth to twenty-seventh, I'm just saying, talking about, uh, hotel reservations and that sort of thing.
All right, Colin?
I guess I'm kinda like everybody, I don't know, do we need, but I don't wanna make anybody mad that we don't, uh, get certified, but send five people down there to, for three days in a hotel, two nights, I guess.
I do have, uh, um, an agenda, do you guys want me to send it to you?
Do that, send it to me, I'd like to look at it, and-
Okay.
Please, and you don't have to do it right now.
I can do it right now, I'm looking at it. Anybody else want it?
Yeah, Sandy, send it to me also.
I'll get it to Trish, she can forward it on.
I'll just give it to everybody.
Okay.
Morning.
We don't have anything else in general meeting, make a motion to go into drainage.
All right, first and second to go into drainage, all in favor?
Aye.
We are in drainage.
We're draining at nine o'clock.
We're ten times away, Dave. We were looking for things to talk about.
We're, but going off the parking lot to drum a business, I mean, to talk to.
Everything must be going good, or, nobody yelling?
Yeah. Well, yesterday at church, the biggest thing that's, I had to deal with a beaver dam, so that's pretty decent, you know?
Like I said, them little guys have been busy, every little dredge has just got water dammed up in it, it's amazing how you can, they know, they know when water's short, too.
Yeah. Did you ever talk to Brandon about that, what's going on there?
I don't know, uh, he told me he's gonna be there by the end of May, and here it is, except the June, I haven't seen him until yet.
Yeah. You wanted to get somebody else?
Eric Brandon Myers, is he down up there in that area, he'd be good for you.
Yeah, yeah, and I asked him too, well, that's why I asked you, you, you know, like Rick just said, you're thinking he'd be there by now. And, I don't worry. I know.
It is.
Absolutely.
Well, maybe we just need to talk to him, and say, by a certain date, if you aren't gonna be here.
Give him a deadline.
I mean, I check with him periodically, I mean, I did throughout the DD five, and, uh- The deadline started last fall, and he said he was gonna be there last-
Wow, that wasn't gonna happen.
Anybody else, you want me to check with him this week?
Yeah, I'll call him, you go, I'm in, I'll call him, and I'll-
Okay, we'll both call him and say, where are you at? Well, let's, uh, get a date here, so he ain't-
Where are you at? If he told me he's gonna be there by the first of June, and it's after the first of June.
Yeah. And this is on DD, which- I don't even know that.
Yeah, I can't remember, it's that-
It goes up through section, probably one, two, and three, or roughing.
Yeah, I guess, for some reason, I wanna think twenty-nine, but-
I know where it is, but I just, I can't think of the district number. I don't know, but I don't know that stuff. But he's, you, you've got the directive on it, you've got the work order on it, this isn't there yet, well, we'll talk to him.
Now, last time, I talked to him, he said he was wrapping up a few things up in the, around five.
Yep, and he, to my knowledge, the la, and this was then, closer to a month ago, was wrapping them up. And, yeah, I can't remember if he said specifically he had something else, but I said, yeah, I would have thought, and, and I talked to you, Rick, and thought, well, that's the part, first of June, yeah, he should be there, and he's not, so. Sometimes the contractor's schedule's a little different than what-
Yeah.
Well, just depends how many other guys they've been promising, they'll promise to be there by-
Right.
-June first.
Is his extra rate moved, or is it still? I haven't been out there since, because with the last, was what he was finishing, basically was finishing up the one last thing up there, and it was-
That's the last I've seen it was sitting up there.
I haven't been by since, because I, and it looked, I physically saw it, was about done, and, uh, like I said, that wasn't just recently, that's been a few weeks ago. So, I don't worry that, I guess it's an honest worry.
Well, we really can't start until nine o'clock, in case someone's-
Got a complaint.
-going, in case someone's coming, or hopefully they aren't gonna try to jump in.
Yeah, he actually went over here on DD eighty, guy pulled out of his driveway, he missed it with the front wheel, but the back wheel dropped a little bit, and he cut a hole, about eight inches around the driveway, right on top of DD eighty, runs in the north side of the city, yeah. And the outlet down there is starting to wash out a little bit, around it, that's four foot outlet.
Yeah. So, it was sucking some dirt there, is why there's a hole?
He filled in two holes, one on each side of his driveway last year.
Think it's settling still, or, that's been quite a few years ago?
Drop down probably a foot, maybe a little more.
Yeah, that'd be a little shocking, back out of your driveway in the morning, lose your car.
Good thing I didn't hit the front wheel.
They have no plans for that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Those on file, or, I don't know, where you keep those, in the mayor's office.
Do you wanna look at some of those this morning? Do you wanna look at any of it?
Are they all the same?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just take a glance.
Sure.
While we're going through this.
Thank you.
Now, Rick means you're in, uh, the Drainage District Association, just reading their news letter from Keene.
Yeah.
Pretty much, uh, unchanged, the dues are the same?
Yeah, dues are the same, uh, they added a couple new members of counties, can't think of the right without the other ones they were, um, but, you know, we got that, it's got some changes made down there, so it was good.
Speaks to that, and, so, nothing really other than that, I'm guessing.
They're just watching the legislature, so that they don't sneak nothing through that you don't know.
Yeah, that's what he says, that's what your dues go towards, so.
Yeah.
And I think it's a good organization, and they work for, you know, they work for the people that need the drainage.
Plus, it's one of our closest meetings.
Yeah, that's true, now, they actually have a meeting, do they?
We don't have to go to Des Moines to meet with the group, like, it's just in four hours.
We're having the completion hearing first, I think, yeah.
Well?
Well, we have, we have scheduled it for the reclassification first, and then the completion.
That's fine.
Okay.
Are you still with us, Sandy?
I, um, do you want, do you wanna call me back when it starts?
No, I'm, we're a couple of minutes from there, I just hadn't heard anything, so.
No, I would stand, I would-
I didn't know if we'd lost our connection, I didn't wanna have to call you while we were trying, getting ready to start, we got about two more minutes, just making sure nobody-
Okay.
-comes, or wanted your speech, that, and we started five minutes early, I'm hoping it don't take an hour. I like the way these pictures are.
Yeah, yeah, it's nice.
Did you guys see the picture?
Well, the, the, uh, stuff that, as built, that engineers handed out.
Great.
But it actually gives pictures, or shots of various areas when they were doing the project, so.
That's something I think with projects, is we, we haven't done a lot of that in the past, it's like shooting stuff all the way along, because our survey crews are separate from like our inspectors, but now we have some GPS units that aren't quite survey, like, to the point of hundredths or something. They're close, but they're real, real good, within an inch or two, and horizontally, that's where you want it anyways, the verticalness, along, we're checking that, make sure they're right on elevation, at least for the record plan, getting a horizontal location is important, so we have capability to do that in the future, too. I think that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because in the past, a lot of times, what would happen is we'd just have the contractor give a record of what station-
Yeah.
-it was at along the line, and, but-
And that's a vast area.
It's a ve, yeah, usually, maybe every hundred feet or something, those are marked, so then they would, they would, well, within these hundred feet, where are we at, so, it wasn't perfect, I mean, plus, minus, ten, fifteen, twenty feet.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're here at nine o'clock, we can open this drainage, uh, classification hearing up, I'll look for a motion for that.
Make a motion to open the hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, Colin, I'll turn this over to you.
Okay, you all have copies of the reclassification order?
Sorry.
All right, well, before I go into actual reclass stuff, I thought it'd be good to just kinda go over what the project was, where it started, how we got to here, um, so there is a, a petition, and this is a, a map of DD seven sub two. And so, petition came in about improvement of the existing main tile, and this, in this pink area, and then the orange here is the area that's benefited by that area, so we improved tile going through here, and on this map, of course, it looks a little jumbled up, because I've shown the old tile, still there, too. Um, but basically, what was it, about thirteen- Um, but basically, what was it, about thirteen hundred and fifty feet of eighteen inch and fifteen inch RCT pipe. So in the nineties, there was a relief main put in, but it was stopped, stopped right here. Um, and what that did was, it made everything that, that went into it a half inch drainage coefficient, so it improved it, but it relied on the old tile, too, but this old tile from here to the end still was less than a half inch drainage coefficient. So it was left inadequate, and that was kind of the, the start of the project. We had talked about running, replacing this line that goes up north on Hawaii Avenue, but decided not to do that, and David, you possibly were thinking about doing something privately there, which makes sense, because most of this stuff on the east side of the road is all owned by one landowner, so to do that privately makes sense. It's a drainage district, which you've got a whole group of people working together, then it makes more sense to do a district project, but. Um, and then, so we had a report, and then after I took that out, I had a project process, and it was a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, right now, and that didn't include the reclassification. Um, right now, with the reclassification, we're at about ninety-five thousand dollars, so quite a bit under budget, actually, which is, which is good, that's what we want. The, the construction went well, other than, I think the only thing was that, um, we had instructed them several times to leave the trench open when we were, before we took pictures, we need to take pictures of tile connections and get GPS coordinates on those. And there was a couple, but that did not happen. Um, we talked with, with the landowners here, and they had already smoothed things out, and were about ready to plant, and didn't really want them to come back in, and so the decision was made to just not pay them for those connections that were made, and then that, I believe that was five hundred dollars, that would come off their assessment. Now, that's something that would have to be a decision of the board at the reclassification, you can just subtract that off of this parcel. But we can talk about that more once we get to the output. Uh, the other thing, so in, in that reclassification report, there are several schedules, and it's got dollar amounts for, for different things in the district, that was another thing I found in the report, is that all this area was on a single assessment schedule. So if we left it alone and didn't do anything, everybody would have helped pay for this. And into the future as well, like if repairs are done on this branch two, everybody over here would still help pay for it, too, and that's not equitable. And so the board ordered, um, reclassification of Drainage District seven sub two. So for the, the constructive improvements, this area is pink and orange to the east, and the oil is paying for the, those constructive improvements. But everybody is paying a little bit to help with the reclassification, the whole dis- the whole sub-district got reclassified, um, and so that, they're gonna help pay for that a little bit, and that, in your booklet, there's a, yeah, he's got it open, it's eleven by seventeen sheet, big sheets, this combined benefit schedule. And so it, it shows for each, um, each lateral, each schedule, what is getting assessed, and then it's added up, and that's on the right-hand side, it shows the total dollar amount. So that's essentially what people would be looking at for, um, an assessment this year. And is that, is that right, Kim, it's gonna be levy this year?
It should be default.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was the goal with this, and everything is to get it done, and get this reclassified, so that it can be levied this year, so we don't have to carry five percent interest for a whole other year. Um, but that's, and I wanna make clear, too, the, the other schedule's not that combined benefit schedule, the other schedules in there, there's dollar amounts with it, but it's not a bill, it's just saying, okay, if you, if there was a ten thousand dollar bill or something, that was on this branch two, for example, what would each parcel be looking at, what would they be looking at paying?
Which one is that, Colin?
Um. It's through the back.
Through the back, okay, ask that one, there's no future maintenance?
Yeah, there's six future maintenance schedules.
Okay.
So it shows the area benefited for each one of those schedules, and then it breaks down the dollar amounts.
Based on ten thousand?
Ten thousand dollar assumption, so if it was twenty thousand, they could just take their number, kind of, too, and they know what was our assessment. But I do, sometimes that can be a confusion when we do these, if they're not necessarily benefiting from the construction, and then saying, oh, I'm getting this bill for all this stuff, it's, it's set up for future, future maintenance or future work on any of these districts.
Yeah.
The cushion?
Well, no, they're not gonna, they're not, it's just an example.
Oh, the way they've reclassified, and it's showing, so, so, like Colin says, something did happen on branch two, it would be like that.
Shows you, you're basically.
Gives you an idea of your percentage.
I see.
Doesn't give you the percentage, and if it's branch four, that's it. Yeah, and it's, good, you spelled it out, it says for future maintenance only, not a levy, it's just a, it's illustration purposes.
Yeah.
So you see how that would work down the line, if something would happen in those areas.
That's correct, yeah, so those are just a few things that I wanted to go over before I started, I wanna kinda talk about how we did the reclassification process, and of course, um, how that works is not just me, the engineer, doing a reclassification, there's two other commissioners that are appointed by the board, landowners within Humble County who don't have any interest in this land, they don't own any of it, or have any relatives that own land in here, um, to work with, with myself, to do this reclassification in a fair and equitable way based on relative benefits. So that's the whole goal of this, is it's all about drainage, so, but what is the drainage for? How much it benefits your property? Um, and we look at several different factors on how to come about that, and the first one, oh, one other thing before I go into this. A lot of times when we do reclassification, we find that there's lands outside the district that are benefited, that are not currently in the district, and we would do annexation. Um, this is Drainage District seven, sub two. There was some areas outside of the existing assessment schedule of sub two that I found to be benefited, but you don't, you don't index into a sub-district. And those, all of those lands are already in Drainage District seven, so there's no annexation that's, that's needed in this case, I just wanted to.
But Colin, on that map, when you go above a hundred and eighty, if all that tile goes, it's patterned tile there, goes to the west, and it goes north.
This stuff does?
Yes, it's all, there's tile going in there east and west, and it all goes north into.
Okay. Um, well, and we can talk about what kind of adjustments could be made there, I don't believe we, sometimes what we do is, if we see that surface water and tile water are going in different directions, like one's in the dis- one into the district, one out, the surface water would come in this direction.
No, it won't.
Not?
No.
Well, by the topography and that.
I know, but it ain't gonna cross the gravel road.
Okay. Well, we can, we'll talk about that more then, 'cause that one, it's possible that those would need to just come off completely.
It does not need to be in the district in the south, that's not right.
Okay, well, and I can show you a.
I know what it looks like, but if you didn't have the gravel road in the ditches there, it's, but I know it's out back there, and it all goes north.
'Cause that, this, this map here shows the, and the, the blue, dark blues are low elevation, and the reds are highs. And so up here, that's how we, and there's a ridge right there, you know, that, that goes that direction. And there's a ridge right here, and this comes this way, if there's no culvert in the road. Is there no cul- and I haven't looked at the road plans recently, there's no culvert in the road anywhere on here?
Nothing, no, there's a culvert right there by, at the intersection, right there, and it goes east.
Okay, okay.
And that water goes north also.
Well, then this needs to come out, if that's the case, and that's one thing we did, we tried to get, actually, now that I mentioned road plans, they didn't have the road plans for, for this portion.
You gotta see if there is any culverts or intakes in the ditches or those type of things.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so all of that, that will have to be changed then, because this wouldn't, if there's no way for the water to get out of there.
Don't take this wrong, Dave, but if the land comes that way, it still has to be included, even if the road is there, because that surface water heads that way, 'cause I, I hear that from farmers all the time, well, there's a, there's a fence here, and none of that water runs across the fence, so, I mean, we hear that all the time.
Yeah, but to speak to that, this is elev- this is elevation.
Elevation, yeah.
So your elevations are not wrong.
No.
Now, it'd be different if your elevations were wrong.
And I'm surprised there's not a culvert right here, it looks like there should be. But I guess water, in some places, there's not a huge area like this, water could sit there and soak in the ditch. And there's other times, too, where there's not culverts, but there's an intake on the one side, and there's a tile that feeds from the other side, so there's, that made it more difficult when they said, no, we don't have road plans for any of this stuff, and it's harder to find where things are at.
Could there be one there that's buried, of Kyle, right?
Yeah, it's bottom.
I hope it's not, 'cause Jensen went right along the gravel road from the west-east, and D and M went from the gravel road on the east and went west, there's two different projects, I did that farm, and they were within six feet of the road ditch.
So if there was, then they redid, busted through everything.
It was, it was, it's flooded now, because they never hit anything there.
Okay. Yeah.
I mean, we, we can look at a reduction, being the tile goes the other way, but I don't think we can take it out of the district, do the elevation.
I'm not worried about that, I'm not worried about that, I just know what we stand at.
Yeah, a lot of times we do a, if it's tiled into the district, or if it's tiled, if it's tiled out of the district, we do like seventy percent reduction, is the typical reduction that we do.
And we've done that on other projects where they have tile maps, so.
And people, I mean, that's, it happens, people tile through ridges and stuff, and don't always follow the topography, it decides where it makes sense to do that, so it, but sometimes it's hard for us to see where those are exactly happening, we don't have private tile maps all the time, and there's only so much you can see on aerial photos. So we rely, we, we do as much as we can, and then rely on landowners to provide additional information to make those decisions, but.
If the rain's enough, that water will run to the northwest in that corner, there's a place in the fence where it washes through. About up there with that little circle.
It happens to be.
Keep going west, keep going west, left, 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 now up, there's the top of your map.
Up here?
Yeah, it will go through the fence, if the rain's enough, Colin, and I can take you out there.
It would have to, it would have to jump here and come around here?
No, no.
'Cause this, this red is the highest.
This, this, it'll, it'll run right through the fence, right here, and this water here will come this way, if you get a.
Through the ditch you're talking?
No, I'm coming, talking about through, this is flat, you can see that, but it'll run through, right there.
Okay. That has to pool up quite an area.
It has to rain wash.
It does, yeah. It is, and it is flat, but this is a little bit of a high spot, if it, if it could get through here, it wouldn't go this direction. Anyways, we, we can come back to that later, I think we should go through those different factors, and come back to that. But, and one thing we do, too, is we have these one acre hexagons, and each of the factors that I'm gonna talk about, all the, all the hexagons individually have each one of these factors, um, associated with it. Like this one is a soil wetness factor map, so it's got the soil overlaid over it, and then we have different soil drainage classifications, and that's just through the web soil survey, um, you've probably heard of something like very poorly drained soil, or poorly drained, somewhat poorly drained, well drained, and that kinda helps determine your need for drainage. If you have very poorly drained soils, if you drain it, um, that's gonna help with, with farm productivity and everything else, you have a greater need for drainage, if you get drainage, you have a greater benefit then. Um, and so we have these different numbers that we're assigning, very poorly drained, a hundred, so they have the greatest need, poorly drained, seventy-five, somewhat poorly drained, fifty, well drained, twenty. And all these different factors have, these are unitless numbers, and what we end up doing is, apply all these factors, each one of these hexagons, multiply them together, so it's mixed up, and then those totals for each hexagon, we add it up for the whole thing, and then for each hexagon, it's a percent of the total. And for that hexagon, that's the percent of the total, that there's a dollar amount to be applied, that they would pay. And then, of course, we don't break this down by hexagons in the schedule, it has to go by parcel number, so we just sum it within each parcel, so that's kind of the basic procedure. This is, this is kind of a major component of, of the calculation, is soil wetness. And you can see in different, different places, some of the soils don't have much of a need for drainage, so they got a twenty. These red ones are more up towards a hundred or seventy-five, so they have a greater need for drainage. And you can see in this area that was, the tile was put, the new tile, it's got relatively wetter soils. So there is a greater need for drainage there, even compared to some of the rest of the districts. And.
You guys put all that numbers into a computer, or is that?
Yeah.
You do that by hand, or?
Computer.
I was gonna say, that'd be a mathematician's nightmare, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would be.
Oh, my goodness.
Track and all that, we have to have these unique hexagon IDs to make sure that the number adds, and a lot of spreadsheets and things to make sure that works correctly. Um, another, another factor, and maybe I should leave a map up with the actual tiles to help illustrate this. They benefit from the district facilities, so another thing is proximity to the tile in this case. If you're further away from the tile, you have to do more to get it to that district facility, so you're not benefiting as much. If you're right next to it, it's easy to just tie in, so you have a greater benefit based on proximity to the district facility. Um, also use of the facility, so, uh, just starting at the, these main tiles for the, for the district. If you're in this parcel, you don't use any of this stuff, you're only using this last little bit. So, but if you're way up here, for example, you use all of this and all of this, your water flows to that whole thing, so you have a higher use factor, is what we call that. I mean, so we're finding factors, too, to every schedule, so it's not just one for the whole district. We did six different, um, maintenance schedules, so it's for each individual district facility. Now, like this one, branch two, we didn't do one for each one of these laterals, it's branch two, lateral one, two, three, and four. They're too small, they serve too small of an area to make it, makes sense to, to do a separate schedule for those. It's not cost effective, and it's serving such a small area, and it's such a short stub, that there comes a point where you don't do an individual one for each specific facility. So we did, like, that's an example one where we did this as one. And then, of course, how much area you have, like, like in a parcel, how much area is in the district. Some of these, the whole parcel is not benefited, it's just part of it, that's, that's the other major factor. And then the last one is, we do a. And then the last one is we do a runoff, uh, circus runoff adjustment. So basically, your typical farmland will get just a factor of one, so it doesn't change anything. But roads, like gravel roads, we give like a one point two, because there's more, it's a harder surface. There's more runoff generated there, um, and then paved roads, like a one point four. So it's a, an increase to take into account the amount of runoff that they're generating, um, from the surface. And then, like I was talking about before, um, there's, there's times where if they tile out and it surfaces in, or vice versa, we make adjustments there as we, as we see those. And typically, if it's just normal circumstances, we would, um, do a seventy percent reduction if it's tiled out, and a thirty percent reduction if, if it's tiled in but the surface is out. So those, that's kind of the general process of, of how we did this. And then, I put, put this together and then met with the commissioners and we talked about it. And agreed on the methodology and the numbers. And after you combine them all, like, this is, this is just an example one, and then you come up with something like this. This is, this is for the, actually, for the constructed tile. This main tile and then branch five that was constructed. And you can, you combine all those factors, apply a dollar amount, which in this case, eighty thousand dollars, which actually, I think, in the combined schedule, I think it's at eighty-two. So these numbers would not match exactly, but you get that general idea here. The reds are the higher dollar for acre hexagons, the greens are lower. And typically, again, the, the wetness plays a big account, but right here, at the end of the new tile, it's typically a higher, higher success, because they used the whole thing and they're close to it. And then you get out here and it's far away from it, so that proximity drags these dollars down quite a bit. But just on the general process of reclassification, are there any questions or concerns with, with that? Does it make sense?
Yep.
Yep. Does. Very good, uh, description.
I guess the only, the only other thing that would need to be addressed then is, well, two things. One is what David was talking about, is this piece of, these three parcels here. And then also, uh, the Jensen parcel right here, where those two tile connections were not documented, and that five hundred dollars was.
Taken off.
Taken off.
Was that five hundred dollars total?
Yes. I should hold on to this one second, because I want to make sure in this completion report.
That that's been removed?
It could possibly be. I did not. And I have, ask my recollection, too, is that we didn't do that as a damage as part of the completion report. The thought was to do it here, just take, take the five hundred dollars off this parcel, and it's going to equal out, because rifles didn't get paid that, um, and it, the damages to them, so.
Yeah, so it's a zero toll.
Zero, zero then.
Okay.
I don't know what parcel number that is offhand, but it's, uh, it would be the south, southeast to the southeast quarter of section eighteen. And how you do that motion is, for that parcel, you do a reduction of five hundred dollars off that combined, that combined benefit schedule. So it has nothing to do with a future maintenance schedule.
Yeah.
It's just this combined benefit schedule.
So do we need to do a, a acceptance of the?
Well, we need to have a.
Any adjustments you want to make.
Need to be done now.
Would be done first.
Before, that's what I wondered, is before we accept it?
So what's the exact terminology you had again?
The south?
It's the, it's the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter, section eighteen.
And just a five hundred dollar reduction?
Yep.
Section eighteen.
To the combined, in the, in the combined benefit schedule.
Well, I would make that motion for the southeast quarter, of the southeast quarter of section eighteen, to reduce that assessment, five hundred dollars, just on this combined benefit schedule that's listed.
And if you're happy with the way he stated that, I'll second it.
Okay. We have a first and a second on the reduction on that one parcel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
This here is the parcel number if you want that.
Thank you.
Because you've got the legal description, and then I'm going to see if I can track that down. And then the other thing is these up here.
That currently resides, resides in overall district number seven, correct?
Correct. But it ends up coming into this ditch. But the question is, is should it be in DD seven sub-two, which is this tile system? Or not? Or, and if it is, if it is going to stay in, I'd say that a reduction is needed, seventy percent reduction.
But then does it get out into seven?
It's already in.
It's in seven?
Yep. It's, that's a separate, there's an open ditch schedule.
Yeah, for seven.
For seven.
And that would.
So it's already in that on its own. But this is just for, it would, these ones would be in this.
So it would show up if you did any maintenance on branch two?
Branch two, or the original main tile, or the relief main tile.
Okay.
So it would be in those three schedules. And I guess, if, if the road blocks it off, I'm not, I'm not opposed to zeroing those out in these, in these schedules. If there's no culverts and there's no way for the water to get through. The topography shook, I mean, if you were going to put a culvert in here, which I'm surprised there's not, the topography, if, just the road wasn't there, the water would come this way naturally. So, well, I have a hard time.
Well, my, my problem is, we used to set a precedence here. I would prefer to do a reduction rather than, than stick with the topographical map and do, just do a reduction, because that could open up.
Or through your, his description, is there that little small area that's showing really was it, there was very much of an assessment to begin with on that?
Well.
There will be none on this schedule, or in what we're working with.
There is a little bit because of the reclassification.
Yeah, that overall.
Yes.
But, but the project that we're discussing is zero.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I started to do it.
It doesn't do with the project.
It's mainly the reclassification.
What I'm afraid is then if you reclassify something, again, someone's going to pay for that, and you may, it may just be a wash. And, I mean, I'm wondering how, well, you see, where did it get for the overall dollars right now? Is it worth, you would have to, would you have to go back and redo the whole thing, or just apply a reduction to that?
No, and that's.
We just apply a reduction to that.
Well, how that works is, like, let's say there was a major adjustment made to, and the maintenance schedule doesn't matter, because the total cost basis is just an assumed round number, so it just won't be a round number. But for the combined benefit schedule, like, there's a, there's a levy that's going to be made this year. And so if you make reductions, then if it reduces it below what the bill does do, then you just have to take that amount and say, okay, we're going to levy a hundred and one, or a hundred and two percent of what the schedule shows, to make sure that the bill is getting paid. So if they reduce somebody's by a bunch, it's not going to get reduced quite that much for the bill, because you're going to have to levy a hundred and five percent. Does that, does that make sense? In this case, if we're talking, I'm guessing we don't have to change anything there, because.
Is this, am I looking at the right one? Is this a, is this a combined?
Yeah.
So that's the, that's the, yeah, that's what they would be charged for the reclassification.
This is where it sits right now.
There's a map, there's maps inside the front cover of the reclassification report, or at least that.
Well, we're dealing with, with section seven, it's a hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents, is what it amounts to.
Apparently there's some. I have them here.
Yeah, they should be in the cover.
Yeah, I got them. And it's the second map there. It shows the, the dollar map for the reclassification. So they're looking at under, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Yeah, somewhere about it there.
So if they get, if they had a seventy percent reduction off of that, that's not, I don't think that's going to be enough. That's going to trigger a need to levy a hundred and one percent or something, so we'd still say anything. It's not as big enough change to affect that.
Right.
I think that's what I would recommend, is a seventy percent reduction.
I, I didn't retain a portion, something like that.
Well, that, and you're saying that it's, that's not ever wise, we're not going to incur any other costs to redo this? Just going to apply that reduction?
You and the board would order that, and then it's done.
From one evening.
You're not going to go back and come up with another fifteen thousand dollar bill for redoing this?
No. I can, if Kim.
Those two, right?
No, we're not going to have yet.
No.
Just, just in the report, just cross it out and say as modified at the hearing, and send that, so you've got a final, or Kim, if you want, to take a, a copy and just.
So are we applying a seventy percent reduction from this point forward, then?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there future maintenance on branch?
It would be all the schedules that.
Any schedule that would involve this little area would be a seventy percent reduction, because there's minimal.
Minimal water that would come this direction, yep.
And does anyone feel that there's any, any additional exploration that needs to be done, or that it just does plan simply not get across the road?
Well, there's no culverts through the road.
My rain is stronger, that's in another drainage district across the road.
That's in seven, isn't it?
That's in seven.
Yeah.
Or it's in eleven.
Eleven?
Sub-one of eleven. Here's your road. Up in section seven is where you're talking here, and you're talking the road up here.
You can have lands that are in multiple drainage districts.
That doesn't, well, it really doesn't. It doesn't really show that.
They've got a lot of water going different ways.
It doesn't really show that little loop up in there.
You would hope that they would have that adjustment, a thirty percent reduction in their schedule, or some kind of reduction accounting for the surface water going the other direction.
At least it's not, that doesn't necessarily always. Exact, but yeah, what they're seeing is there's no, it doesn't even show that.
Sure.
Is this, is this correct, or are we just, you have a poor map that we're looking at here? Two of seven, are we looking at this whole area?
Yes.
Uh, is it?
That's showing, yep.
There's nothing showing it going up in there here.
There's the road.
If this is the road.
That was, yep, and that was the old boundary.
If you're going across that road, that's in, uh, sub-one of eleven.
Did you add this when you reclassified it?
Yeah. But again, it didn't need annexation, because it's already in seven.
Is it? This doesn't show, this is sub-one of eleven. Unless we're, unless, you're just not seeing that correctly. This is, you're saying, claiming this is also BD seven.
The way that one shows.
That is interesting, because that shows it going this direction.
Uh-huh.
Um.
Shows it going north, is that what you were talking about?
Yeah. Is that an entry curl around and come into BD seven? Then that's why. Because I had Kim give me the existing assessment schedule of BD seven main open ditch, and those parcels were in there. That's why.
Okay.
No annexation would need to be done.
Okay, so that, it did show up this way, then? In the schedule? Just like this, this wasn't annexed?
It's already, these parcels are already in BD seven.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So I think it's for that discussion, and if the seventy percent reduction follows along for any future, I would make the motion of a seventy percent reduction, be it specific.
Are those acres north of one eightieth?
Yeah, I think that would be, rather than give that for all three of those parcels, it's, it's.
The parcels listed currently in BD seven sub-two north of one hundred and eightieth street receive a seventy percent reduction.
On every schedule.
On every schedule. This moving, moving forward.
Okay, we have a first.
Okay.
We have a second from Sandy. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The motion?
No idea.
Doesn't have to.
Very consented.
Okay.
Very consented. All right.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, or?
No, I'll look for a motion to accept this report, or approve it, I guess, if it's approved.
I make the motion to approve the report as presented.
A second. Been modified.
And been modified, yes.
Okay, we have a first and a second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to the completion hearing. I'll open up the completion hearing.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we are in the completion hearing. Did we have any written problems? Did we turn anything over?
No, nothing written, nothing verbal.
Okay, well, I'll make it pretty quick. We got this completion report, again, worked with the two commissioners on damage compensation. There was no sanding crop destroyed as far as the construction of this. It was done early spring, able enough to avoid any of that. But when you go in with heavy equipment and are digging big trenches and packing back in, it does cause some future damage, there's contraction damages, and so that's, that's essentially what we were looking at as far as damage compensation for this project. And you can kind of see here how we went about doing that. Essentially, it.
No, that was this.
You don't have that?
No, we discussed this.
A little earlier.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we had already had a meeting on this last week.
But we just talked about it. We, but we don't have. Give the copy in front of us.
Yeah. Oh, you don't?
No, I.
It's probably in your drawer. No.
I didn't bring it. I'll have to turn it back.
That's, that's fine, because we've looked it over.
Yeah, like, so that I sent it in, and if you gave ten of that approval, you would have talked about it. I've got another copy or something like that.
Do you want, do you want another copy? No.
Yeah, we, uh, mail them. Yeah, we, mail one of them.
Yes, yep.
Yeah. You can look at my copy.
Well, do you speak to how you figured the damages?
Correct.
Oh, David is going to have one.
Sixty foot wide corridor along the tile trench, assuming it adds up to a full crop loss and basically set that up for the, assume two-thirds yield loss in 2021 and a one-third crop loss or yield loss in 2022. And then use the Humboldt County 2020 average corn yield, 190 bushels an acre and an average price of $5.63 a bushel for 2021. And then for 2022, we use October 2022 futures price of 5.33 a bushel. At least that's what it was at that time, because they're changing daily.
Daily.
Hourly.
Yeah. Soybeans, 66 bushels an acre, 14, 15 a bushel for the 2021 and 1271 for 2022. Is there any, and that applies to the Jensen parcel here, 100 mark parcel crops the road is a little bit, but it's mostly in the Jensen parcel. Is there any?
On the back.
Yep, and there's in the last page, there's a table that shows the recommended average compensation, like $1,600 for Jensen's and 86.58 for the 100 mark. Any questions? Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yep. Well, we won't do this with the commissioners as well.
Yep.
Okay. No, I think that's pretty self-explanatory.
And are there any other damages? Is there nobody else? Okay, I didn't think there would be, but sometimes there's fences and buffers and things that-
Not on this one.
Different things. So we always just want to make sure to give landowners the opportunity if there's any other damage there.
All right, well, after this completion hearing is closed and the retainage will be paid and it's all done.
Thirty, thirty days from today, the retainage can be paid.
Okay. All right.
We close the completion hearing?
Yep, I'll take a motion.
A motion to close the completion hearing.
Should approve the-
You want to approve?
Yeah, let's get a payment on the damage.
I approve the damages as listed and figured.
Second.
We have a first, America, second from Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And now a motion to close the completion hearing.
Second.
Second from Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, project's done.
And I would also like to thank the commissioners because by the time you sit and listen to all the times you guys meet and look at that and think about some of the stuff that you're talking about, they'd probably wonder why and yell, why I haven't volunteered to do this.
Well, I think you make it by-
It is, you do. I applaud you for that.
I have to hope, when they met, that they were understandable going through the process.
Yeah. Yeah, they're, they're really good to work with.
If they come back from the second meeting, I'm assuming you understand what they're doing.
Yeah, yeah, we met a couple times.
Like, yes, like we said, thank you very much, the commissioners.
I mean, the, the colored octagon charts makes it really easy visual to see.
You did a good job too, I appreciate that.
Yeah, this was very well put together and very well-
I was kind of nervous when you come in with your easel and your paper and the-
It's not bad, you know, pictures worth a while.
Where are we getting here?
Yeah.
You did a very good job, Colin, I appreciate it.
Yes, you did. Made it very good.
The, the old pile made the diagonals through the roadway, secondary roads basically abandoned with, with the new relief line and then the day around private line up and hook the intake that was in the road right away over. Do we need to update the, the map to eliminate the line?
Does it show that's been abandoned?
Yes. You're probably going to find out it's really full of dirt because the 10-inch went under the road, there was eight and a half inches of dirt in it. And we crossed, when we went north, we crossed either five or six lines that were going into the road and each one of them, there was less than an inch at the top of each one of those tiles. And everything there in our field going to that under the road is abandoned. It all is.
If it's going to be abandoned, then it's a good thing that one under the road still was there, you don't have to worry about it collapsing.
Yeah, it was really a mess there, but it's all fixed up.
Now we just got to wait for the rain to see if it works, right?
Yeah, always.
Yeah. Well, I thank you again because I, I think it really was a good-
Good project.
Project when we started it and it went off without a hitch, so thank God.
Yeah.
Knock on wood.
You don't always get spring weather like this.
No.
Get, get that in. I would never happen if I could get in before crops.
Well, we appreciate all of your work too, so.
Thank you very much.
Easy to understand.
Yeah, it's probably the best presentation on-
Anything else on drainage?
Retains will be paid and that goes to Colin.
Maybe have a scene that-
Well, they don't really, they don't really have anything.
They're all asking for it up there and hand you go through it.
Yeah.
And that's why I say I hope the commissioners stop saying when they went through the information, so. They're good work.
It was.
Colin, I got questions. So 30 days from now, you'll have us, give us a pay estimate, what we have to pay.
Yeah, that'll be a quick and easy one. I just give a pay claim that takes retainage down to zero and I sign it and-
Then we send them the check.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good.
Perfect.
That's always easy working with you.
Well, good. Don't want to make it difficult.
And thanks for making my very first hearing and completion hearing pretty simple.
Okay.
All right, anything else for drainage?
No, I, I did give everyone a copy of the, we just received some mail from the Iowa Drainage District Association on Friday and I just gave you all a copy of that.
Yep.
And I have one, one claim that needs approved and I'm so sorry, I don't know who you are.
Thank you.
Mike Callen with Iowa Farms.
Okay.
Just going to put you in a minute.
Yeah, I just, I, I put-
I'll make a motion to go out of drainage if we're done.
Second.
Oh, well.
All in favor?
Okay, who's?
Bruce.
I started it.
Dave and I wanted to complete the agreement.
No, Sandy, stick around.
We need to call her.
Oh, okay, all right.
All right. Thanks. Bye.
Have anything else come from the board?
And his last name, Callen?
I think that was it. Iowa Farms.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colin. Okay. Yeah, anything else the board has to discuss?
I think we already discussed it.
Okay, we have a good turn. Second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Return that.
Thank you.